Just heads up.
Little heads up.
Still ain't got none.
I'm not mad at, uh, timing is not always the best thing.
Oh, see movement, alright. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 2nd, 2025 special session of the North Gibson School Corporation. It is the intent of the North Gibson School Board and Administration to conduct an informative open meeting concerning the business of education in our school corporation. School patrons who wish to address the Board may do so during the agenda time designated to hear patron concerns. We will not discuss in open session any individual school student or school employees and/or descriptions of such people which leave little doubt as to the identity of these people. Dr. Goggins, Superintendent of Schools, and myself will be available after the meeting to discuss any concerns expressed by patrons. Before we proceed on with our agenda, I'll ask that everybody please rise and join with me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Must have been an impactful flag, the light.
It did.
So much patriotism, just, it's affecting the electrical. Well, thank you. Uh, so first item on our agenda is public comment on agenda items. The school patrons who wish to address the Board on items specific to our agenda for tonight may do so during this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Within tonight's consent agenda tonight, which was sent out to the Board ahead for their review, we have resignations, retirement, employment actions. And that's it. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion from the Board on the approval of the consent agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion made, duly seconded. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Up next, we've got a revised contract with Sunflower Therapy Centers. Dr. Goggins?
Yeah, so it might have been last meeting or the meeting before, you approved Contract with Sunflower Speech Services. It was a continuation from last school year. We have since had a part-time speech-language pathologist who works for us, who has decided that at the end of September, near the end of September, she will be moving to not working as a speech pathologist anymore. She's decided that she's not going to work anymore. So, that has brought the opportunity where we need some more support. So, we're adding two additional days of support through Sunflower Speech Therapy Services for this school year to help us get through, and then we're gonna continue to try to find an in-person speech therapist moving forward. But this will help us get through the school year and not significantly increase speech pathologist caseloads, though they will increase slightly. So, be my recommendation that the Board approve this modified contract to allow us to do an additional two days of support on top of the full-time person we already have from Sunflower Speech Services.
Thank you, Dr. Goggins, for that recommendation. Is there a motion from the Board?
Make a motion.
Is that a motion to approve the contract, the revised contract with Sunflower Speech Services?
Yes.
Have a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion made, duly seconded, to approve that revised contract with Sunflower Speech Services for the 2025-2026 school year. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Up next is the public hearing on the, oh, I've skipped a whole area here. How about that? Uh, I'm now going to open a public hearing on the 2026 budget, capital projects plan, school bus replacement plan, and budget resolutions. Dr. Goggins, the public hearing is open.
Okay. Um, I'll speak for a few minutes and see if we have any public comment, but it doesn't look like we have anyone here to speak and give public comment. One thing I did want to share with you, when we did our present, when I did my presentation, we did not yet have our certified net assessed value for 2026. Um, we now have that. So, we estimated our 26 assessed value to be 923 million. I put thousand in there, but it's supposed to be million. And the certified net AV for 26 is 1 billion, 820 million, 316,465. So, remember, I said I was estimating that low because we wanted to make sure that the TIF rollout did actually show up on the AV as we anticipated, and it did. So, that means that our estimated, um, proposed tax rates are going to be significantly less, which we, we anticipated. So, I have asked Baker Tilly to kind of update those estimations now that we know what our assessed value actually is from the presentation they did before regarding our potential impacts to debt service and operations rates. So, they will factor that certified assessed value when they are approving our budget. So, those, again, those estimates of the debt service advertised rate of .9296, an operations rate of .8992, and an overall rate of 1.8288 are going to drop drastically and will be in line and probably significantly, should be significantly less than what our '25 approved rates were. So, everything is lining up as we have been saying and presenting all along. We just have to wait for the Department of Local Government and Finance to actually cut our rates and tell us this is what you're approved for, so.
Now, that's a dramatic and, and very positive improvement for us as far as tax rate goes, and certainly some might say, well, you missed it by 100%.
Yep.
But that is on purpose because you can't take anything for granted, and we're one of the first large TIF districts to be rolling off, and they may have taken the stance of, well, yeah, it ends at the end of '25, but we can't change the estimate till '26.
Yeah.
And that would have put us in a really tight spot had we made our estimates based on that coming off. So, going in very conservatively, put ourselves in a good position to, to end up having really good tax rate figures that we're looking at approving for tonight.
Yeah, next year, I'll be able to do a much better estimate. But, I mean, we're looking at the, the actual increase in, in assessed value from '25 to now, what we have with '26 certified net assessed value is 667 million, 227,125 dollar increase from '25 to '26. And so, you know, 400 and some million of that was what was being captured by the TIF. So, we saw a significant increase in assessed value just even if the TIF didn't expire, which is something we couldn't have projected on our own.
I don't know whether you can look at it as a good thing or a bad thing, but we're not the only one in, in this boat.
No.
All entities is gonna have the same problem, trying to figure out where they're gonna be next year at this time.
Well, the good news for us is with property tax reform, those that are seeing a drop in their assessed value, and with the property tax reform, they're going to see significant rate increases for their property taxpayers, or significant lot, more significant losses to their revenue. So, we're still gonna see losses to expected revenue, but we're gonna be sitting much better than, than others, and our taxpayers will see some relief from that.
You can see the, the circuit breaker here between '25 and '26. You know, that's, that's quite a chunk of change right there.
Yes, we're pretty confident that that increase from 1.27 million to 1.94, 1.95 million is not factoring in the TIF rolling off.
Right.
So, we're hopeful that that may actually be less than the 1.2, almost 1.3 million we lost, but we don't know.
They have no idea right now what that will look like this time next year. No idea.
But Baker Tilly's estimates were.
That's what you're doing.
We would actually see an improvement to, but that was before Senate Bill 1 with the property tax reform. So, I would be happy if it just stayed with what it was. That would be great.
Well, certainly, I would encourage our patrons who are following along online, if you're interested in more information about our '26 budget, that you look back at our last meeting, and Dr. Goggins went into much further detail on all of those. So, really just hitting on the, the big changes, hey, we've got better numbers for what our '26 assessed value looks like, and, and, but more information is during that last meeting.
Yep.
Again, it's hard for us sitting here to, to, if, to try to tell the public that they need to, if they're concerned about taxes, and they need to pay attention to this end of it first, you know, so they know at the end of the day, when they do get their taxes, why, or a little bit of an idea of why it's this way. I hear a lot of, lot of things that you try to, you try to set people straight, and they, well, they just won't listen, that's all it is too, because somebody told them, you know?
Well, I have to emphasize, we are looking at a flat-line budget from '25 to '26, and I anticipate very similar in '27. New revenue is very limited, so we're fortunate that we can project a flat-line budget, because many are projecting significant revenue losses, meaning that they are going backwards in their budget request, so.
There's gonna be a record number of schools asking for referendums in the next two to three years. And they don't have the TIF problem. I shouldn't call it a problem, but the TIF situation in their district have to sort out, you know?
Correct.
Alright, well, seeing no public comment and hearing no public comment, I'd entertain a motion now to close the public hearing on the 2026 proposed budget, capital projects plan, and bus replacement plan.
I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
Have a motion made, and is there a second?
Second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we're gonna have public comments, or public hearing and public comments potentially on the additional appropriation requests for the issuance of general obligation bonds.
Yeah, so just a reemphasis of what this is. So, as part of our overall bonding for upcoming projects, a total of approximately 40, up to 40 million, because we are not going to issue those construction bonds until we get closer to construction time, which allows us to get bids out and know exactly what our needs are. We do have a need to sell some general obligation bonds to be able to start some of that forward planning. We're already receiving bills for design, construction management during the design process, and then we have some projects that are early, smaller projects, that we would like to go ahead and get off the ground that aren't impacting school buildings. Some of those, including the Tiger Trail and lighting, to expand the Tiger Trail through the campus so we can get people off the roadways, walking in the mornings and in the evenings. We are looking at LED, doing, beginning the LED lighting at the high school. Football lights, as soon as football season is over, we'll go ahead and get those done, so they're in place for track season. And then, we also are looking at, what was the other item? Potentially doing some LED lighting upgrades here in this building as well, but we'll just kind of see how that can stage with some of the projects and ceiling replacements and things. We may not be able to do a whole lot of that. So, we can get those, oh, and a band tower, band, marching band observation tower. We use a scissor lift right now, and that was one of the projects that we can move forward after marching band season, and go ahead and get that in place so it's ready for the next season. So, those are small projects, so we're looking at issuing up to 3.5 million dollars in general obligation bonds. That comes out of the total of the 40, up to 40 million, so it isn't issuing in addition to. So, tonight, this evening, this is an additional appropriation hearing. You've already gone through the process to approve bonding, so this is getting permission, having a, a public hearing on the additional appropriations, so we sell bonds and we receive those bonds, we can actually spend the money. So, it's an opportunity for the public to comment on the additional appropriation, then following that, we have a few resolutions to approve, to move forward. I will say, you remember, we do additional appropriations typically in the fall for education fund and sometimes operation. This is the same process, but I will be coming back in October to do an additional appropriation for the education fund, just to protect and make sure we have enough appropriation to give raises or increases of some kind. So, at that point, we'll be doing this again for the education fund, not for debt fund. So, did I miss anything in that explanation? Perfect, thank you. So, Mr. Williams, you can open the public comment?
Yeah, the floor is open for public comments on the issuance of GO bonds and additional appropriations.
Just, does the Board have any questions, since we're gonna wait and see if there's any comment? No?
Okay.
Is there a motion from the Board to close the public hearing on the issuance of GO bonds and additional appropriations?
A motion.
Have a motion made? Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright, now we have a resolution to consider.
Yeah, so this resolution, there's two resolutions this evening that go along with with this. The first resolution is to authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds for campus improvements and related matters. So, my recommendation this evening would be the Board approve that. We will do a signature once approved, and then the next one we will do as well, and you'll sign both so that she can take those back with her.
Alright. Thank you for that explanation. Is there a motion from the Board to approve the additional appropriation resolution for the proceeds of the general obligation bonds and interest earning and related matters?
So moot.
A motion made.
Wait, this one is the resolution of the School Board approving the issuance of general obligation bonds. The next one is approving the additional appropriation.
Alright, thank you. Mike, is, is your motion to approve the resolution of the issuance of GO bonds and related matters?
So moot.
Have a motion made? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, duly seconded. Any discussion on that motion before the Board? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay.
Now, we need a motion, or, well, we'll entertain a motion to approve the additional appropriation resolution for the proceeds of that GO bond and interest earnings and related matters.
So moot.
Have a motion made? Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to approve the additional appropriation resolution for those GO bonds and interest earnings and related matters. Any further discussion?
This will be up to the, the $3 million. That's.
Up to three and a half million.
Three and a half million.
Yes.
Right.
Thanks for clarifying that, Mike. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Again, to emphasize, it's three and a half out of the 40. It's not in addition to, so.
And you've explained the reason why we do that, rather than commit ourselves all at once.
When you're doing the projects we're looking at.
Yeah.
Being under that tight timeline that the, the big bonds are requiring of us, we're better off to get a head start with some stuff.
Smaller.
And get, get some things out of the way, and then get the rest of the stuff under that big, tight timeline.
There's a lot of design work going on with the larger projects. George and Link and VPS and his crew, his engineers, we've had a couple of meetings just to get the base designs down, and then we'll get some engagement from the Board as well as individuals within the building level to start really fine tuning those, and we should be ready to go out to bid with those in February, March at the latest.
I guess we need to, as we do this project, we need to clarify again and again and again how we're doing that, because some people will look at it and say, well, you know, they just, they bonded 37, 8, 9 million dollars. You, you're only, you're only asking for money when you want to spend it, and that's, that's what we're doing.
Right, yes, and we're doing that.
When we look at an additional appropriation.
At or below the, the current debt service tax rate.
Yeah.
Is what we anticipate, so.
When you, when you say additional appropriation, everybody thinks, you know, they're, they're asking for more money.
Yeah, so the additional appropriation is confusing, because an appropriation is just permission to spend, and we have to prove to the DLGF that we have the dollars to actually.
Spend.
Get that additional appropriation approved.
Right.
So, we don't yet have these dollars, so we can't submit this additional appropriation until those bonds are sold, um, which we, we'll be doing that, um, in the very near future. So, we're going through all that behind-the-scenes work to get our bond ratings and all of those things to prepare for that bond sale of the 3 and 1/2 million, which will also prepare us for bond sales in the future. But there's a process, so it's gonna be probably late fall when we get these actually sold, and then we will actually need the additional appropriation. So, we're ahead of this, which Barnes and Thornburg and their team have been great in keeping us ahead of the schedule, so we're not behind. But it's time to get it done.
I know it gets pretty complicated if, if, if you're not right here, and you, we see this in black and white, and we know what we're doing and what we're, we're, we're saving money here. You know, that's basically what we're doing. We're trying to save money, uh, by not paying interest. Uh, but for people out in the public, they don't understand that.
Now, Mike, you make a really good point that we gotta make an effort at communication because misinformation travels much faster than accurate information.
It gets confusing.
And I would encourage our community to keep in mind, if you hear that we're doing something unreasonable, ask a source that will give you accurate information, and we'll, we'll best try to explain what it is we're doing and that we are acting within reason and being good stewards of the public funds.
That's all they can ask of us, really.
Nothing under additional items on the agenda tonight, Dr. Goggins?
Nope.
All right, well, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion.
Have a motion made? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Okay. We have some things to say.